Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is that I am the national representative of America. Consider the republic, the justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Janeda.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Pearl Latonda.
Yeah.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bishop, absent. Counselor Ray Coopero.
Yeah.
Ten members present, one absent. Madam Chairman.
I just want to let everyone know that Counselor Bishop is not here today. He's out celebrating his 35th year anniversary with his wife.
Resolutions.
Resolutions.
First resolution introduced by Counselor Ray Coopero.
I would draw it for another time because Mr. Bob's not here. I would like to wait for him to come and accept it himself.
Okay, so he's withdrawing it.
The next resolution introduced by Counselor Vido and all members of the City Council. Whereas the International White Ribbon Campaign is an effort to urge men to speak out in opposition to violence against women as a remembrance of the Montreal massacre, a 1991 tragedy when one man murdered 14 women in Montreal, Canada. And whereas Jane Doe Inc. launched Massachusetts White Ribbon Day in 2008 to engage men to help end violence against women, men, and children. And whereas this year's Massachusetts White Ribbon Day aims to strengthen the Massachusetts Foundation for Responding to the Needs of Victims Regardless of Gender Identity or Sexual Orientation and recognizes that victims of sexual assault and domestic violence may be LGBTQ, elderly, disabled, or male. And whereas this year's White Ribbon Day was commemorated with the gathering of male leaders in surrounding communities, including Chelsea, to have meaningful conversations about masculinity that foster respect, safety, and equality. And whereas the White Ribbon Day pledged states, "From this day forward, I promise to be part of the solution in ending violence against women and any gender-based violence." And whereas our municipality wishes to join with Harbor Cove and other municipalities across the Commonwealth to raise awareness of White Ribbon Day and to support survivors of violence, now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council, in our representative capacity of the residents of Chelsea, recognize all days in March as White Ribbon Day and do hereby pledge from this day forward to actively participate in the campaign to end domestic violence.
Counselor Robinson.
I'm standing under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none, would you like to speak on it?
Like to take the pledge.
Okay.
If I could ask my colleagues to stand and anybody else in the audience that would like to take the pledge with us? We as the men of the Chelsea City Council pledge to never commit, condone, or remain silent about men's violence against women. And instead, we'll be an ally with women by promoting respect, dignity, and equality in our personal and professional lives. From this day forward, I personally promise to be part of the solution to end violence against women and all gender-based violence. I will recognize that as an adult man in leadership, I carry privilege, power, and responsibility whenever I go. I will remind myself that gender-based violence is men's issues that affects all of us regardless of our backgrounds and identities. I will educate myself and other men about the harmful impacts of gender-based violence. I will choose my words carefully and responsibly to work toward using nonviolent language. I will speak out against attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual and domestic violence. I will confront sexism, racism, hemophobia, transphobia, and other forms of oppression. I will find out how to help when I suspect that someone I know is a victim or offender of sexual assault or domestic violence. I'll learn to mentor and teach boys about healthy masculinity that helps create a better world for all genders going forward. I'd like to thank my colleagues for taking the pledge.
At this time, I'd like to... Oh, did you want to speak? You have the floor, Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I just want to thank Harbor Cove for working, dedicating themselves to work to end domestic violence and those survivors of domestic violence, the children, not only here in Chelsea but beyond Chelsea, as we know they have headquarters in other communities in our area. But I just really want to just give them thanks and big kudos for all the work, the dedication, and their commitment to ending, as the pledge say, violence not only against women but also all gender-based violence. So I want to thank their leader here today for being with us every year, just to remind us how important this day is, not only as people of leadership position, but also folks and fathers and brothers and sisters and aunts and uncles. So thank you for being here today and making sure that we have our white ribbons on. And I know it's very dear to your heart, but it's also dear to our city. So keep the fight going in a positive way that we can end this and save lives. Thank you.
I'd like to suspend the rules for a couple minutes so I can present this resolution to Carole from Harbor Cove. Anybody that wishes to speak, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Public speaking? Does that mean she's coming? No. Going once, going twice. That portion of the meeting is closed. Counselor Robinson.
President, if we can take out of order 11D, the home rule petition, and if I can ask for suspension of rules, then the attorney could go over what the home rule petition is.
Any objections to taking 11D out of order? Okay, so it's before us. I want to suspend the rules to have who speak. If you could just... Yep. The podium. Yep. Yes.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Dan Rosen. I'm a lawyer at the firm of Klein-Hornig, and I'm representing the Chelsea Housing Authority in connection with the Innis redevelopment. I had the pleasure of being here about two years ago, I think, to present a similar version of this bill. I know many of you were here at that time as well and for subsequent hearings. I'm happy to go through the bill in as much detail as you want. I think maybe the first thing I'll say is what's different about this bill compared to the one that was introduced two years ago. And that is that the bill two years ago stated that the redevelopment of Innis Homes was not subject to the state prevailing wage requirements. That language has changed. It now says quite explicitly at the end of this bill that the redevelopment is subject to state prevailing wage requirements. That's the fundamental difference between the two. So I'm happy to go through the bill more generally, as you like. I appreciate it's complicated, but I wanted to just make that clear from the start.
Does anybody have any questions to the chair? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a roll call on the adoption. A yes would be to adopt the home rule petition. Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Janeda.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Pearl Latonda.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Bishop, absent. Counselor Ray Coopero. Ten in favor and unopposed, one absent. Motion is adopted. We now have the approval of the minutes, March 11, 2019.
Counselor Garcia. I'm filing unanimously under suspension if there are no objections. Seeing none, to move. Thank you, Counselor.
Let me see. We have a communication received from the City Manager, 311 system.
Dear Counselors, I am writing to notify you that it is my plan to proceed in FY20 with the adoption of a 311 system similar to constituent service systems operated in other nearby communities, including but not limited to Cambridge, Boston, Malden, Revere, and Everett. The goal is to provide better and more prompt responsiveness to constituent complaints. Adoption of such a system that will also allow us to phase out the problematic see, click, fix system. The 311 system I have in mind will operate as follows. We will have two employees whose main function will be to field complaints from constituents, whether by way of telephone calls, emails, text messages, or direct submission to a new web-based issues reporting system. These employees will be housed within the new DPW under the supervision of Public Works Commissioner Fidel Maltese. These employees will be responsible for assigning the issue to the appropriate department representative or directly assessing the relevant information in a city database, tracking progress on the issue, and providing information on the resolution of the issue to the individual who reported it. We believe this will be a much more effective way of addressing constituent complaints, and hopefully will be well received by our residents. The program outlined above does require financial resources, both for the software tracking system and the personnel. The total amount, the total annual cost for this system are anticipated to be approximately $162,000. A proposed budget is attached. We do have some existing funds available to help launch the system in year one. This includes $27,000, which was previously approved in the FY19 CIP for a DPW work order tracking system, and $50,000 in a community compact grant approved by the Commonwealth last year. The balance will come from appropriated funds. At this point, I am not requesting any action by the City Council. The purpose of this letter is merely to provide information and to prepare the City Council for some additional personnel costs that will appear in the FY20 budget pertaining to this 311 effort. I am hopeful the Council will see the benefit of this improved constituent services effort and approve the requested FY20 appropriations.
Move it under, to Subcommittee Conference, under suspension? Any objections? Okay.
The next communication from the City Manager, Local Option Votes for Assessing. I am writing to request a new local option votes that pertain to property taxes. If adopted, both provisions would take effect in the FY20 tax year, adoption of Chapter 653, Section 40 of the Acts of 1989. First, I am requesting that the City Council adopt the provisions of Section 40 of Chapter 653 of the Acts of 1989. Adoption of this local option allows for the assessors to pick up new growth that occurs between January 1st and June 30th on property that is being constructed or improved. Typically, for local property tax purposes, property for any given tax year is assessed as of January 1 of the preceding fiscal year. However, the municipalities that adopt this section, the assessors are allowed to assess any real property being approved as of June 30th. Consequently...
Counselor Garcia.
Our communication under suspension. If there are no objections, there will be something coming up in the new business.
Thank you, Counselor.
The final communication from the City Manager, Financial Accounts for the Community Preservation Act. Dear Counselors, I am writing to request that the City Council establish a necessary financial structure to manage funds collected through the Community Preservation Act, which adopted by the city in November of 2016. Funds have been collected since January of 2017. A financial structure for properly tackling...
Counselor Brown.
Communication under suspension. Something else is coming up in the new business.
Thank you, Counselor.
Communications. We have a copy of a communication received from the City Clerk, Parking Clerk, Jeanette Centron White, regarding the actions approved at the March 5, 2019 Traffic and Parking Commission Meeting.
Okay.
Accept and file, anybody?
Any? Counselor Cooper most susceptible to file the communication under suspension.
We have a late communication received from the City Solicitor, Shawa Watson Fisher, with regards to vacancy in District 5 School Committee member. No objections to the late communication?
Any objections to the late communication?
Nope. Now we need an order to accept.
I'll read it. Today, the City Clerk received notice from the School Committee Member Julio Hernandez, who he is resigning from his seat as of April 28, 2019. There will be a vacancy in the seat as of April 29, 2019. Pursuant to Section 32 of City Charter, the City Council President shall, within 30 days, call a joint meeting of the Council and School Committee to act to fill the vacancy. There are more than 180 days until the November 5, 2019 regular city election. We are prepared to meet with the City Council as to next steps and rules and regulations that have been adopted in the past and as to election results. Thank you for your considerations. And the City Clerk, Jeanette Centron White, and I are available if you wish to discuss the new changes.
Can I have a motion? You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is quite interesting news, but it's also falls under our charter that when such vacancies come up, that we should set a meeting together with the remaining members of the Council and the School Committee and talk about the replacement.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. Definitely bittersweet news. I had the honor to meet the School Committee Member Julio, who resigned. He was an incredible leader during his tenure. So definitely bittersweet, and I know that we will be looking for someone else to fill in his shoes, but he did an incredible job while he was in service, and it was very nice to see another young fellow millennial serving as well. So definitely bittersweet, but we wish him, at least I wish him the best, because he was a great representative for District 5. And that being said, if anybody else is watching and would like to serve and bring some difference and change and some positive growth to the School Committee Board, definitely encourage you to apply. But definitely sad to see Julio Hernandez go. Thank you.
Counselor Janeda.
Thank you. I won't speak about the incident itself. Again, with all respect, the schoolperson Hernandez's decision. However, I may have some reservations about filling the post. We are literally like a month away from when individuals have to pull papers, and then we have an election in November. I'm almost... I feel almost that I think it may be best just to leave the seat unfilled at this time and that the School Committee work with just the members in hand rather than give an individual, any individual, any sort of head start, so to speak. And again, I speak with this without knowing if there were any election results, if there was already a person who had run for that seat, because if not, at this point... But again, that's my instant feeling, given the timeline. We unfortunately have had too much experience in having to fill School Committee seats. So again, it's, I feel more sadness for the situation that this seems to be a recurrent incident. But I think at this point, we may actually have to decide whether or not it makes sense to fill the seat rather than just leave it open. Thank you.
Any objections to me speaking from the chair? I just want to say that I've had the opportunity to work with Julio Hernandez, and he was someone who advocated very strongly for our schools and challenged the status quo. It is a shame to see someone like him go. I can't comment or say as to why this happened, but I will tell you that it is a huge loss to the city and to the residents of this community, particularly our parents with school-aged children in our schools. He attended meetings, events. He was very present in the community at a time where you only see the same one or two faces from School Committee. I think with the Charter Review coming up next year, it's a good opportunity to maybe look if it's even appropriate for the City Manager to take over the schools and for us to start appointing School Committee members, because our parents and our children deserve way more than what we're getting. Anybody else? Moving forward.
We have unfinished business. We have the ordinance that was objected to on the bike, the green bike ordinance.
Counselor Janeda.
Thank you. This order was introduced at the last meeting and was sent to a second reading, and I'll say exactly what I had stated last time.
No, it was objected.
The City of Chelsea is...
It was objected.
Objection to the first reading.
Yes.
This is the first reading.
Oh, this will be the first reading?
Yeah.
Okay. The order put in front of us is to change the ordinances in the City of Chelsea that would allow an electric-powered bicycle. Many of our residents, almost 5,000 actually, we have 5,000 regular users of the Lime Bike system. And Lime Bike, in its business model, has gone, the way the industry is moving, is that they are changing their fleet of bikes to these electric-powered bicycles. They're a little bit of a booster. They help individuals when they're going up hills and also for long rides, especially commuters. Because Chelsea is part of the pact with, I believe, 16 other communities, the MAPC, Lime Bike is getting this agreement, or in some cases, this is already approved in other communities, they don't have the same ordinance. If we don't adopt this, basically, what we're saying is we won't be able to have any share biking here in the City of Chelsea. And that'll be a shame, because we have, like I said, so many users. So I ask for your support in this. We have a vibrant use. If we talk about ways to get cars on the streets, off the streets of Chelsea, and anything that will improve traffic congestion here in the City of Chelsea, this is the way. So again, I ask for your support to change this. I want to make clear, this has nothing to do with scooters at all. That's a separate issue, and that will have its time and debate if and ever we decide to discuss it. This is simply to continue to allow Lime Bike to operate, or whatever provider the MAPC decides to have. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Actually, Counselor Bishop had asked me, I know it's going to a second reading, that he would like to have a conference on it. So maybe before second reading, we could have a conference to satisfy his concerns.
Subcommittee Conference. Okay.
Okay. The next order of business is second readings. We have the appointments under second readings recommended by the City Manager. For reappointment to the Community Schools Advisory Board, Mr. Kevin Sandoval, for a new three-year term expiring in 2022. For reappointment to the Conservation Commission to carry your Christmas, for a new three-year term expiring in 2022. For appointment to the Planning Board, Ms. Sylvia Ramirez, 62 Reynolds Ave., Chelsea, to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Gladys Vega, term expires December 15, 2020.
Counselor Janeda.
Do you want to adopt a roll call?
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Janeda.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Pearl Latonda.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Bishop, absent. Counselor Ray Coopero. Ten in favor and unopposed, one absent, and the motion is adopted.
New business.
New business. First order under new business, appropriate the FY2019 Community Preservation Committee operating budget. Introduced by Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown.
Accepting for a second reading. Ask to go to the second reading. But I would like to speak briefly on it.
You have the floor, Counselor. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I got this, and I followed up with the manager on this, I'm speaking. I wanted to follow up with Counselor Bishop, but he's not here tonight, so it's one reason I also want to ask it to go to a second reading. Basically, from what I'm hearing and what I read, neither Community Preservation Act that was voted on in 2016, and since that time, there's been some taxes been collected from the city, from residents of the city, 17, 18, 19. It's in the order, and this money has been sitting there, and we haven't done anything with it. I guess we're trying to clean it up, this account, to make this count more active and more proactive, where we are actually starting to get a budget in 2020, which is July, 1st of July of this year. And moving forward, we need to make sure we establish this account. The Department of Revenue's access to make sure this account is in good standing, and basically, moving forward, we need it to be in good standing. If you look at the numbers just on the communication, you'll see 2017, 2018, 2019. Those are the funds that's been taken up for green space, affordable housing.
Historic preservation.
Yes. So it's defined, but we haven't done anything, for whatever reason. But now we're willing to get proactive and use this money, but you have to like clean it up. So that's what we're going to do on it. Hopefully, if there's any questions, we'll have a second reading, and we'll have them answered before then, and we'll take a vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business.
Introduced by Counselor Vido, voted that the City of Chelsea accept the provisions of Chapter 653, Section 40 of the Acts of 1989, which provides that new building structures and other physical improvements added to real property during the period beginning on January 2nd and ending on June 30th of the fiscal year preceding that to which the tax relates shall be deemed part of such real property as of January 1st. This change shall be effective for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2019.
Any motion? Can you speak on it?
Well, let somebody move it to where you want to move it then.
Does anybody care to speak on it for the public? All right, how about we suspend the rules, and the City Manager will address us and let us know what it is?
No, don't.
Yeah, okay. How about that?
So, thank you, Madam President. This is a local option that the old, a majority of communities in Massachusetts have adopted. It was first allowed by the legislature back in 1989. I just learned that Chelsea had not adopted it fairly recently after some unrelated discussions with the assessors. But basically, when you're assessing property for a fiscal year, you have to go, you assess it based on January 1st of the prior fiscal year. I've had this discussion with you many times. It's why assessed values tend to run about 18 months behind the market, because your assessed value is always from the previous January 1. What this local option does for those towns that adopt it is, it allows you to capture for buildings that are under construction. for buildings that are under construction or getting rehabilitated. It allows you to capture that growth that occurs between January 1 and June 30 of that prior fiscal years. So in essence, you can capture new growth one fiscal year earlier. So it basically allows you to grab new tax dollars a year earlier than you otherwise can take them. And so there really is no downside to this. It benefits municipalities by allowing them to get one extra year of new growth, but it only is applying to things that are under construction. It doesn't have any impact on existing homes, existing commercial businesses that aren't undergoing some construction or renovation.
Okay. Roll call.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Janeda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
No.
No. Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop absent. Counselor Ray Cooperow?
No.
No. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, two opposed, one option, motion Next order introduced by Counselor Vido, voted that the City of Chelsea accept the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 37A, which provides that the exemption for persons who are legally blind shall be $500 per year. This change shall be effective for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2019.
Can I have a motion?
Roll call. It's a roll call.
Move to the top, I will call. Any discussion on it? No? Okay.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Janeda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Not here.
Not here. Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop absent. Counselor Ray Cooperow?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two opposed.
Before we read the next order, I just want to acknowledge School Committee Women, Rosemary Carla, that's in the room, and Girl Scouts Nora and Chloe. Thank you for being here today.
The next order introduced by Counselor Ray Cooperow, ordered that the City Manager look into hiring another animal control officer for the purpose of issuing fines to people that don't pick up after their dogs when they take them out.
Counselor Ray Cooperow?
I'd like to have a call for the suspension. If there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Any Counselor Rodriguez? He objected to the first reading? Yeah, objected. Next order of business.
Order introduced by Counselor Ray Cooperow, request that the City Manager look into renegotiating with Massport to try to bring back the window soundproofing program in the City of Chelsea.
Counselor Ray Cooperow?
I'd like to have a call for the suspension. If there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Any objections? You have the floor, Counselor.
Many years ago, Massport came with the windows. I was one of the recipients of getting these windows. Then later, they said they're going to stop making the windows. They took it away. Now, all of a sudden, the planes doubled. They went twice as much, and they're saying that, well, you have no more noise. Your noise has been taken care of, but it actually hasn't been taken care of. So we'd like the City Manager to go back and open a new dialogue with them and let them understand that the people of this city deserve a little more consideration than they've given them. And the consideration needs to be that they might have to go back and look into giving us better windows, or windows at least, because more planes are coming over our city all the time. It's increasing. And so they should look into coming back to the table and figuring out a way, maybe to help the citizens of this city with this problem. Thank you.
Counselor Janeda?
Thank you. I appreciate and District Counselor's order and invitation to Massport to talk about sound mitigation. I've been on this subject matter for a few years now and was actually one of the co-authors of an order that asked for a sound study to be, for the city to look into doing its own independent sound study. The City Manager and I continue, and he has been very diligent in trying to find even one company that would qualify to do a sound study. We are still looking for that. It has been very difficult to find a company that would be hired to do the sound study. The reason why is because whenever we have approached, or the City Manager has approached the City, Massport, on the subject matter of sound mitigation, their answer has been and will continue to be, it's a non-starter. They are, they've done their program. So I already know what the answer's going to be. However, I, you know, again, if you want to encourage him to open up the dialogue again, I appreciate the support. I need all of your support here on the Council. Last Monday, I attended, I couldn't attend the parking meter, parking study meeting here. Last Monday, I attended Massport's meeting with the airport community. This is a membership of communities that are impacted by Logan. And at this meeting, they stated that they are in the middle of a new sound study, an updated version of a sound study. And that updated sound study would take into some of the things that hadn't been talked about before, which was toboggan free basically, the impact of hills, the resonating sound of the planes, many different factors that the previous sound study model did not. And the interesting, sad, but totally unexpected result was that despite the number in the increase, the dramatic increase, number of flights going over Chelsea, their new sound study module states that Chelsea does not qualify any longer for sound mitigation. When confronted with the higher number of planes going over the City of Chelsea, their answer was, but our planes are quieter. That's how they responded. So obviously, and I totally expect this, so this is to say that even today, according to their study, the homes that currently have been soundproofed don't qualify for soundproofing. That if we were to start from scratch, all of those homes in Chelsea that right now have Massport windows, according to their new study, we don't qualify. Forget about increasing soundproofing, which I think is needed. You know, my father's house is underneath, I see the bellies going over his house every single day, and by the way they drew the lines, he doesn't qualify. Apparently, sound only travels to the right side of Chelsea, doesn't travel to the left. Okay? So I've stated, I don't believe what Massport reports. I would ask the City Manager to continue his efforts in trying to find an independent sound study company to answer an RFP. I would ask for my colleague's support when he comes back to this council and says, we'll have to spend $50,000 or $75,000 to do our own independent sound study to rebut what Massport has and fight for its residents when and if we have to. But I would also ask that as part of this, that at this meeting, I learned that their sound monitor is in Admiral Hill. I have no idea why it's in Admiral Hill.
Say that again, it's where?
In Admiral Hill. I would ask the City Manager, as part of this, to also ask Massport to relocate its sound monitor, to place it on top of the Shirliff School. It's right in the direct line of the noise, and I want that monitor to tell me that it's not making the 65 decibel noise. So as part of it, I already know they're going to say no to any soundproofing, I get it, we'll have to sue for that, but I would like to have that relocated, and we'll continue our efforts. And I ask for your support when the City Manager comes back to us and says, this is what we have to do in order to prove, disprove what Massport is telling us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janeda. I would ask that whenever these meetings do come up, that you do let us know so that we can support as well. Thank you for your efforts.
Next order introduced by Counselor Vido, ordered that a Subcommittee Conference be scheduled with the City Manager and union representatives to discuss group talking plans.
See you none so moved. Thank you, Counselor.
Order introduced by Counselor Vido, ordered that a Subcommittee Conference be scheduled with the Assistant Director of Planning and Development, Alex Strange, to discuss the Beecham Street project.
Counselor Garcia?
There are no objections?
See you none so moved.
Order introduced by Counselor Robinson, ordered that the City Manager provide an update on the master plan.
Counselor Robinson? See you none objections, so moved.
Order introduced by Counselor Robinson, ordered that the City Manager provide an update on the Salivation Army Building.
An adoptee should unanimously under suspension.
So moved, Counselor. That's it. Public announcements. Counselor Garcia?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make a small clarification, because it's bothering me a bit, and it's, I've been up for a really long time today, and all I want to say is when I gave my speech and my pitch about the situation with the School Committee member, I just realized I said "bittersweet," which can be totally misconstrued, very bad word choice on my end, but there is absolutely like no happy feelings that he's gone, so I just want to clarify that.
All bitter? All bitter, no sweet?
All bitter, no sweet.
Got it.
I sat down, and the first thing I said to my colleague here was, did I say "bittersweet?" Because there's no sweet in any of that. So definitely want to make sure that that does not get misconstrued, bitter.
Did you get the Chelsea record?
Not sweet.
Thank you.
Bitter, not sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? No other announcements? Moments of silence? See you none further business before us. We're adjourned.